Good evening. My name is Barnett Overett. I chair the Town of Foxborough zoning board of appeals. I'm calling to order the February 18, 2021, public meeting of the board, including the public hearings that the board will conduct. In accordance with the Commonwealth of Massachusetts Executive Orders of March 12, 2020 and November 2, 2020, that suspend certain provisions of the open meeting law and impose limits on the number of individuals that may gather indoors. We are conducting this meeting virtually by Zoom. Public comments this evening will be accepted during the public hearing. To offer comments by Zoom, you will be asked to use the button in Zoom that is labeled raise hand. This will alert us that you wish to speak. We will individually bring you into the meeting. If you are planning to speak tonight, you may want to take a moment to find the Zoom button. Make sure that you are in a quiet space and have a working microphone. Also, please be sure that your Zoom window includes your name. If you are participating by phone, you can raise your hand by dialing star nine. If you will not be speaking tonight, we recommend and request that you not use Zoom, but instead watch this meeting on Foxborough Cable Access by cable television, their YouTube channel or Facebook Live. In the event of any technical difficulties, matters on our agenda that cannot be considered, automatically will be continued to the board's next meeting. That meeting is currently scheduled for March 18, 2021. All votes that we take tonight will be done by roll call. At this time, I wish to recognize the other members of the board. David Brown, Kimberly Mellon, Kurt Yegian and Lorraine Brew. Mr. Brown, Ms. Mellon and I are regular members of the board. Mr. Yegian and Ms. Brew are associate members. All members will participate in the matters that we are considering this evening. However, only the three regular members are authorized to vote during tonight's scheduled public hearings, unless a regular member recuses himself or herself. In that event, an associate member will be authorized to vote in such regular members' stead. A unanimous vote of the voting members is required in order to approve the matters that are the subject of a public hearing. Finally, I wish to recognize Diana Gray, the board's administrative assistant, and Barry Ringler, the Town of Foxborough Building Commissioner and Zoning Enforcement Officer. For the time being, seven o'clock PM, Jeffrey Vito seeks a special permit pursuant to sections 4.2.5 and 5.4.2 of the Code of the Town of Foxborough, Massachusetts, Chapter 275 zoning, to allow the construction of an attached two-car garage addition with a front yard setback of 16.3 feet where 35 feet is required. The property located at 5 Harlow Road is in the R40 Residential and Agricultural District and is not located in any restrictive overlay district. Mr. Vito, I see that you are here.
I am, yes.
Okay. Before I turn the floor, so to speak, to you, I just want to make a clarifying point. When you initially applied for a special permit, you applied for that permit under section 5.2 of the zoning bylaw. And that application was based on the fact that Tom Rin, in denying the initial building permit, stated that you must go to the board to get a special permit under section 5.2. Though he correctly stated that a special permit was required from the board, he incorrectly cited the zoning bylaw provision that was applicable. Section 5.2 deals with non-conforming uses. Non-conforming use is a use that's not permitted by the zoning bylaw. A garage is a conforming use. It's a permissible use. However, because your house currently is within the front yard setback and because the garage, when it's added to the house, would exacerbate or intensify that setback, what we're dealing with is a non-conforming structure. In other words, a structure doesn't comply with the dimensional requirements of zoning bylaw. Now, for us to approve your application, we will need to determine that your house with an attached garage that has a front yard setback of 16.3 feet is not substantially more detrimental to your neighborhood than is the existing non-conforming house. You have any questions?
I do not have any questions.
Okay, that being the case, the floor is yours. Why don't you tell us what you're planning and we'll probably have some questions for you.
Okay, great. So we're planning on building a two-car garage more for our personal use and necessity. So two-car garage, when you talk about that footage of 16 foot feet and 25 feet, I just wanted to be clear that we're clear that that's to the sidewalk. I know the law says to the street, but there's another 10 feet from that to the actual street. So if the measurements of 25, 9 on one side to the 16 feet, the middle range there is like 21 feet plus the 10 feet is 31 feet. So we find that there is enough room there. I also took some Google Earth pitches of my house that I submitted with it so you could see where the garage is going on the side of the house. And there's some cars actually parked in the driveway with the sidewalk there. We also had spoken to all our neighbors, not just the abutting neighbors. And we submitted a list of our entire neighborhood after showing the plans to our neighbors on what we wanted to do to the property and how it would look on the property. And they were all in agreement in willing to sign that piece of paper. That's my entire neighborhood, the 30 houses that are in here. We did take into consideration when building this garage, when I said it was out of necessity, we have our... My father-in-law is planning on moving in with us. He is slightly disabled right now with a dropped foot. We see him not in the near future. The near future, he will not be able to be using his justice cane. It'll be a wheelchair. So we had to build the garage or design the garage a little oversized so we could plan on putting a handicap ramp in coming down the side so we could actually fit it in.
So just to clarify, the garage will be attached to the house?
Yes, it will be attached to the house. And it'll be parallel where it says 25 feet. It's coming straight off of that.
Okay. And the plans that you submitted with the application, that's the plans that you're intending to use when you construct the garage?
Yes, sir.
And the... Will the driveway be widened then to accommodate access to the garage?
Yes. The driveway is going to be three car lengths wide and run along the garage.
Okay. Anybody else have a question or questions?
I do have a quick question. This is Kim. So I see in the pictures and when I drove by, it appears as if there's two driveways right now. Is your intention, if this is approved, to keep both of those driveways? And you said there would be...
No, those driveways will be gone. The driveway would be just the two-car garage and enough of a passageway to run along the side of the garage.
So both existing driveways would no longer be there?
Correct. Correct.
And so somewhat we're in...
Do you see the patch of grass in between the two driveways?
Yes.
That'd be the new driveway.
Okay, thank you.
In essence, the garage will be where the fence is, correct?
Yes, the fence is a little tilted. So the fence would actually put it at 25 feet. So if you turn that fence just a little bit, that's where we're off there.
So to follow up on Kim's questions, the two existing driveways, you're planning to tear them up and grass that in?
Yes. Yes, sir.
Okay. Dave, any questions?
Just as on the plans, I believe right on the plans that we gave you from the architect has the driveway too.
Barney, can we get the plan up on the screen here?
Yep, Diana?
She's on mute. There we go. Okay.
Let me unmute. So you want... What do you want to look at, Dave? You want the Google thing?
Well, I'm looking at the... What do we call it? The footprint. Oh, and there's the picture with the pool and all that. Okay, I just refreshed my memory. I drove by it a couple of weeks ago, actually.
There's an architect plan in there that should show you a drawing of the house.
Let's see. I gotta make it smaller. Probably this one?
Drawings that are actually 3D. That's the back of the house.
This one? That would be the front.
Yeah, that's the front. That's what it would look like. So the garage would just be right where the two... The driveway would be just in front of the two garages with a walkway along the side.
So how large is this structure?
It is 30 by 30.
So it's 30 deep and 30 across. You just have the two garage doors so that it's sectioned in. It shows like the new back door, I guess, and a little bit more of that. That's part of the addition. Am I right?
Yes.
Oh, I see. I know you're right. Yeah, I got it. Yeah, that's exactly what I was trying to figure out. Okay.
We want to be able to go in that garage door, that door beside the garage doors and have a wheelchair ramp go up into the house there.
Okay, yeah.
And that's extending it. Usually it's 24 by 24. So I extended enough so we could get the ramp in there.
Okay.
You know, we just want to be able to take him to, you know, to his office visits, doctor's visits and stuff in a safe and manner way, you know?
I understand. I put an addition on my house a year or so ago and I set some things up with the idea that hopefully, you know, if we end up on a wheelchair, we're ready to go, you know? Kurt, anything else?
Okay, Kurt, any questions? Kurt's on you.
All right, I think I'm off now. So my only question is the usual stuff. Assuming that this goes forward, the garage would be, you know, keeping in context with the house as far as materials, colors and the rest of the neighborhood, that kind of thing?
Absolutely.
Okay, good. And one question I have is if a new driveway is being put in, what has to happen or who has to get involved in order to get that curb cut or the curb removed in that space?
I would assume my excavator, the guy putting the driveway in, is going to do that. So where the new driveway is going, we could take the curb that's there and put it where the old driveways were.
Right, I understand that, yeah. I'm thinking that sometimes, you know, the town needs to get involved because it's their curb, you know? I don't know what approvals, if any, are needed to do that.
Okay, I'm willing to pay for that. Yeah, I'm willing to pay for that, yes.
Barry? Barry?
Yes.
Is that something that comes into your jurisdiction or the highway department?
Yeah, that's us plus highway, the engineering for the street.
So when you would issue a building permit, would you require something of that nature or how would you deal with that at that point?
Yeah, we'd want to see how wide it is to meet the width of the bylaw. It can only be so wide, you know? And then again, DPW would look at it to see about if there's any hydrants there or if there's town trees or anything there that not to be disturbed or cause a problem, then how close it is to intersections. But in this case, there's nothing in the way. I don't remember the size of the driveway. What's the width of the driveway?
24 feet.
Okay, yeah, so 24 feet works. That's the max. And then it's 26 at the curb itself in the street. So that would be fine as far as compliant with zoning. That would be the zoning aspect for us. From there, you know, Chris Gallagher and company at DPW would be in the engineering department, would be looking at it for curb cut approval because it's a town-owned, you know, the curb is town-owned.
So would the town also require where the current driveways are? Would they require a new curb to be put in?
I would think so. That's more their, you know, requirements. The building department doesn't get involved in that requirement.
Okay. Kurt, anything else?
No, that's all I have. Thanks.
Okay, Lorraine?
No, I don't have any questions. Thanks, Barney.
Okay, anybody else? Kim, Dave, all set?
Barney, I do have a couple more questions. So I just want to make sure that I'm understanding. You had said this was for personal use. So any intention of using this for commercial use?
No, no. When I say personal, just my wife and I to park our cars in there. A little, you know, comfort from the weather and the elements that we have that we've been living here. We've lived in this house for 24 years now. Our family is grown here. We got married and we moved into this house. We want to stay in this house. When I say personal, it's just for us, nothing commercial.
Okay, thank you. And also, will you be putting, is your intention to have running water in the garage?
No.
Okay, and what kind of electricity are you anticipating in the garage?
Just standard outlets, the two-door garage opening. That's about it and lighting. Basic.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, does any member of the public wish to be heard? Okay, what I'm going to do is just read very quickly the, what do you call it, a petition or a letter that you submitted. And it says, "We as neighbors to Jeff and Laura Vito have seen the plans and drawings to a proposed two-car garage and agree that proposed garage fits into our neighborhood and does not infringe on any property or is too close to the street. We welcome the addition to their house." There are... I'm not going to try to read all the names. I have trouble reading some of the handwriting and it is kind of faint. But there were 30 individuals who reside in the neighborhood who signed the letter petition, whatever we want to call it, who obviously are in favor of what you're proposing. So unless there are any other questions from the board members, why don't we have a motion and...
I have one, Barney. I have one question.
Go ahead, go ahead.
Did anybody decline to sign your petition?
No, they did not. There's 30 houses in the neighborhood, all 30 signed it.
30 for 30. Okay, very good.
Public hearing?
I move we close the public hearing.
Second.
Dave Brown?
Okay, let me do a roll call. Dave Brown?
Yes.
Kim Mellon?
Yes.
And Barney Overett, yes. So let me start. You know, as I mentioned at the beginning, what we have to determine is whether this is or is not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood with the garage than the current house is. And I think the fact that you've got almost all of your neighborhood signing or all your neighborhood signing off on the petition indicates that it would not be substantially more detrimental. And obviously, that would be an understatement because obviously it's shown to be welcomed by your neighbors. So other than the fact that I would have a handful of conditions to impose, I'm certainly in favor of the application. As the board may remember, a couple of years ago, we approved a similar application in the neighborhood. I think that was for eight Hallwell, the Del Pizos. So this would be the second application of this nature that we've considered within a two-year period. Dave?
I don't have any problems with this. You know, I think the problem with that neighborhood is the way all the roads kind of curve around, you know? They don't really square off. So it's very hard to, you know, place our house in a garage, you know, within the setbacks. So I would, you know, be inclined to approve this with normal conditions.
Okay, Kim?
I agree with both of you. This does not appear to be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood.
Okay, Kurt?
He's on mute.
It's not more detrimental to the neighborhood. And yeah, I would agree with that.
Okay, Lorraine?
I also agree with that it's not more detrimental.
Okay. So why don't we talk about the conditions first? Actually, Barry, do you have any other questions or comments?
No.
Okay. Why don't we talk about the conditions first and then we can do a motion? So the first one that I would impose would be to state that the garage is a one-and-a-half-story two-car structure that's constructed in accordance with the dimensions that are set forth in the garage plans. Second, that the location of the garage would be as shown on the zoning plan such that the front yard setback of the garage is not less than 16.3 feet at its closest point. And three, that the external materials of the garage are to be comparable in type and color as that of the existing residential structure. Anything else?
I would say no business is to be conducted. And I think I would also say something about the curb cut should be relocated to any highway department requirements.
I have a question.
Yep, go ahead.
When you talk about business, you're not referring to what they have allowed by right, you know, non-intensive, all market...
Right, yeah.
You're not referring to that.
Yeah, not that. No, they can only... It's a good point. We have to word that in there.
Yeah. So if they fit within the confines of the bylaw that does allow it by right, that's okay. But something beyond that, like any other building that's looking for a business certificate, would have to follow the bylaws.
And that would be the non-intensive use, so that's in there.
Accessory use, correct.
Right, yeah. We know that pretty well.
Right.
Anything else?
Then we accept the motions?
Why don't you make the motion and Kim second it?
I would move that we grant the petition with the conditions that we have discussed included.
Okay, Kim second?
Second.
Okay, Dave Brown?
Yes.
Kim Mellon?
Yes.
And Barney Overett? Yes. So we've approved the application.
Thank you.
At some point within the next couple of weeks, we will sign it. Diana will file it with the town clerk. That will kick off a 20-day appeal period. When the appeal period runs, you'll need to file the decision with the North County Registry of Deeds and then provide a copy of what you have filed with the registry of deeds to, which would be the decision, obviously, with Mr. Ringler. And that would be a condition for him to then act upon your building permit request. And if you have any questions in the interim, just give Mr. Ringler a call.
Okay, great.
Okay?
Yeah, thank you very much to all of you. Thank you. I appreciate it. Thank you.
You're welcome. Good night.
Good night.
Good night.
Louis Frank, Frank's there. Okay, the time being 7:10 PM. Louis C. Sherman seeks a variance pursuant to section 4.1.1, Table 4-1 of the Code of the Town of Foxborough, Massachusetts, Chapter 275 zoning, to allow a side yard setback of 20 feet where 25 feet is required and a modification to case number 89-27 to eliminate or modify condition number one to allow the footprint of an existing four-family dwelling to be expanded with the addition of a fifth dwelling unit. The property located at 41 Sherman Street is in the R15 Residential and Agricultural District and is not located in any restrictive overlay district. Frank, why don't you be ready?
Thank you, Attorney Francis Plain with the applicant here, Lucas Sherman. We're here with the property located at 4143 Sherman Street, which is within the R15 zoning district. The lot has 48,300 square feet of area with 133 feet of frontage. The existing building was built around 1945 and possibly earlier. And the current building has a front yard setback of 25.9 feet. And that is measured from the porch back. The side yard setback is 15.4 feet from one of the side yards. The building is a lawful four-family dwelling as approved by the ZBA case number 89-27. For that case, there was either a three or a two-family dwelling. In that case, it was determined that it was an existing two-family. And with the variances and finding that was approved there, it became a lawful four-family. In 1989, the two-family dwelling requirements were 25 front yard and 15 side yard. Back in 89, however, the side yard was measured at 11.4 feet. Again, the existing side yard is 15.4 feet. I've spoken with a big colony group and they can't determine what that error was. But looking back through the past plans, both the zoning plan and the initial site plan that was approved by the selectmen had the 11.4 feet. But eventually, they went for a special permit, which went from the planning board. And at that point, it was indicated by 15.4 feet. So they eventually did catch it. But Mr. Buckley couldn't recall the circumstances. They said it could have been a screener's error originally. But eventually, they caught it with the special permit and the eventual building as-built plan showed it as that. So again, back then, the two-family was considered a pre-existing non-conforming structure because of what they thought was the side yard, which is 11.4 feet or 15 feet was required. However, at the time, with a multi-family, both the side yard and the front yard requirements increased to 50 feet. So in order to be a multi-family, three, four, you need a 50-foot front yard and a 50-foot side yard back then. So even if it was a three-family back then, it would have been pre-existing non-conforming. But the ZBA at the time made the decision within that 89.27 case that it was previously a two-family. So in order to do a four-family, they needed zoning relief with corrective variances that were required. So in that decision, the variances were approved for front yard and side yard setbacks as well as a 25-foot buffer strip, which was required back then. And they also made a finding that wasn't substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood. So with that, the four-family became a lawful four-family. It is not a pre-existing non-conforming structure because the variances make it a lawful structure. So it doesn't come down under the jurisdiction of a finding necessary with regard to a pre-existing non-conforming structure. And that's why we need variances instead of a finding in this case. Mr. Sherman wants to add on an additional unit. And he has enough area on the lot to put an additional dwelling unit to make it from a four-family again to a five-family. In order to do that, it's not considered a pre-existing non-conforming structure but a lawful structure for variances. In order to do that, he has to get an additional variance because his side yard will be 20 feet where the side yard requirement today is 25 feet. So again, back in 89, the side yard requirement was 50 feet, but now it's 25. So we need that variance in order to put this addition on. I think we filed some plans with you showing what has been... I think we filed some plans with you showing what has been proposed. It's going to be a one-floor unit for his parents-in-law, at least initially, with a attached garage. The living area is approximately twenty-one hundred square feet for the first floor. There may be a basement. They haven't decided whether they're going to do a basement or a slab. They're looking at where they're going to put the equipment and all that. But if there is going to be a basement, it'll be unfinished at this time. The garage area is approximately two hundred ninety-four square feet as indicated on the plan. Again, the granted variances we need is under section four point one point one, table four dash one, which requires a twenty-five foot side yard. We're proposing twenty. In the case eighty-nine dash twenty-seven, the first condition states that the footprint of the existing house not be expanded. So in order to put this addition on, we have to have that modified or eliminated, whichever the board feels more comfortable with, would be an additional requirement in order to put this addition on. Again, we're just four, five feet short on the side yard. If you look at the plan that we've added, we've tried to line up the addition with the house. And that's how we get the five feet requested. We could push the, thank you. We could push the addition over five feet and get the twenty-five feet necessary. However, it would then not be in line with the existing house. Additionally, we'd have to change the driveway entrance and exit. And we would also be moving the parking area closer to the single-family residence. That's right next door. We want to try to keep the parking as far away from the residence as possible. So we thought the best thing to do would be aligning the house with the addition as best we could. And then I asked Mr. Sherman to work with his in-laws to see how narrow they can get the addition that they'd be comfortable with. And I think I gave you some plans. They're just draft plans right now. But you'll see that it's going to be a two-bedroom with a kitchen and living area. And a craft room for his mother-in-law, I believe, for it. But they tried to make it as narrow as possible, line it up with the existing house so that aesthetically, it looks pleasing for themselves, for the neighborhood, for their neighbors, and everyone else. Again, these types of units are in high demand now in Foxborough and I think probably in a lot of areas in Massachusetts. A lot of elderly are looking for the one-floor living space. Again, there won't be a second floor on it. So they, they can just walk right in there from their garage area and live on a one-floor area. So this is in high demand within Foxborough. So even when his in-laws eventually do move out, he would have a unit that would be in demand in Foxborough so people can stay in Foxborough. Looking at the lot, you can see it's an odd-shaped lot, kind of backwards L, I look at it. There is a drain, two drainage esements at the back of the lot, which allows drainage from that area to flow down. Currently, it's ditch-like, but there is concern that there may be some piping down there that nobody knows about because the drainage goes back, I believe, to the early nineteen hundreds. It puts the railroad track that's right behind it. And on the other side of the railroad tracks is a commercial development. So behind them, there is no residential at this time. So the, as in the eighty-nine case, the lot shape, as well as the location of the building on the lot, really dictates the necessity for this variance in keeping with the building in front of it and keeping aesthetically pleasing with it. The courts have indicated that a variance request that's relatively minor can be justified for variance with regard to very minor hardship. One of the things they did look into, at this point, has decided not to do, is actually tearing down the building to put up a four, excuse me, a five-unit new building. Instead, they wanted to add this so that their in-laws, his in-laws can live with them at that time. But it is a consideration. But financially, and they would have to go live somewhere else while it's being done. It would be a great hardship. They have two young children in elementary schools. So it's something that, at that point, they decided not to do. And instead, do this addition for their in-laws to live there. I think at that, at this point, I think we're done with our presentation. Any questions?
Frank, it, does Mr. Sherman and his family live in the, in the building?
Yes, they do. As does his father and, and other tenants. One of them was a friend.
So I assume the other units are rental then?
I'm sorry?
The other units are rental units and it's not a condo building?
Oh, no, they're all rentals.
Okay.
They're all owned by him.
So two family members are already written on occupying two of the units?
One is the father, one is a very close friend, which they consider family.
Okay, but so I guess I'm saying the applicant and his father each have their own units along with the friend?
With others, yeah.
Okay. So you know, what, you know, what is the footprint area of the existing structure? You know, about dimensions?
Do you know them?
I don't.
I, I don't know, but within the, I think I gave you the, no. Under the assessors, it indicates that the first floor, the living area and the grocery areas, one thousand five hundred and forty feet, that's the first two floors. Then the half-story is just over seven hundred square feet. But I don't know what the dimensions are of.
Well, can we, can we safely say, now that I see the plan up there again, that the addition footprint is greater than the existing building?
Not being an architect or engineer, but guessing yes.
Okay. The other question is, this seventeen point two foot, I'm going to call it connector between the existing structure and the addition?
Yes.
What is that?
That, that on the plan that you'll see, the floor plan, is a walk-in pantry for the addition.
So a seventeen-foot-long walk-in pantry. So, so that connector is really, seems to me, the air so you can maintain it as being a single structure. Am I right?
That's the connection, yes.
Big pantry. Going to have Thanksgiving near every year?
That's his plan.
Seems like there was something else I had. Well, did you think about? We still on? Yeah. Narrow in the, the addition somewhat? You don't need the variance, you know what I'm saying? On that?
Yes, he, they've done plans actually pushing it out five feet more. And I met with them and discussed it with them and I explained to them that in that case, they wouldn't need the variances. We'd still have to come in front of you. And at that point, they were like, you know what, we'll attempt the variance. If we don't get the variance, then we'll consider pushing it out five feet and trying to do something like that. Initially, they had the addition lined up with the side yard, you know, approximately fifteen feet off of it. And when I asked them, you know, can, can you narrow it down? And what they did is they lined it up with that, with that. And I said, can you line it up with the house more? So it lines up. So I pretty much told them, can you narrow it down more? And this is what they came, actually, they came back with something else. And there were issues with the pantry and one other lining up that, you know, I worked with Bill Buckley on. And then he went back to his architect to finalize it. So this is what they eventually came back with as to, you know, if, if we can get a variance, this is, this is what we'd like. If we can't get the variance, then they'll either narrow it down or more than likely push it out to some extent. I don't know if it'll go out five feet or not. Or they'll, you know, try to push it out three feet or something like that. But, you know, this is what they wanted to bring before this board initially to see if they would be comfortable with it. Because again, it's a, it's a minimal variance request of five feet, but it, but it is, footprint is large as you indicated, Dave. But again, it's a one-floor living space, you know, intended for his parents-in-law.
Yeah, no, I understand. And I understand that this is the thing these days, that single-floor living, you know, which is essentially what I do with my place. No, it's just very big. I'll give you the historic note. I was there at that meeting in nineteen eighty-nine as an alternate. And I have a problem that I'm not shown on the decision.
They're shown in the minutes though, Dave.
Am I shown in the minutes? Okay.
Yeah, yeah.
I was a newbie anyhow.
Frank, I want to go to the, the variance criteria. What, what's the hardship?
Well, as in with the original decision, the hardship would be, first of all, with dimensional variance, minimal, relatively minor hardships can justify it. And in this case, you know, one of the considerations would be that they may just tear down the house and put up a, a brand-new five-unit in there. That has been a consideration that they've looked into. But again, wanted to go with just this addition for their in-laws.
Dave, being that you're, you were there thirty years ago, or plus or minus. Do you remember any discussion? Because there's nothing in the decision that really gets into, into variance criteria.
No, I, no, Barney, I don't.
Yeah, and the minutes don't show anything either.
I think that a lot of it was, if I remember, and I believe me, a lot of the concern was this discussion, is it a two-unit, is it a three-unit, is it a four-unit? That was, there was a lot of bantering about that. And of course, Frank, you know, you got to not get confused to think Frank was there, you know, it's, that was his dad, right?
Yeah, I, I don't think my dad handled that one. But in looking, to, to me, the history, maybe it was a comeback you did. I, I looked through all the files and the building and all that. And it was Mr. Sherman's father that bought it at the time. And he had bought it within a year or so from the prior owner. And the prior owner seemed to have a lot of run-ins, we'll say, with the building inspector at the time.
Yeah.
For not keeping things quite up to code or.
Yeah, not doing what he, it is coming back a little bit, not doing what he said he was going to do, you know.
Exactly. And then Mr. Sherman bought the apartment complex building. And giving him the benefit of the doubt, I think he thought truly it was a three, yeah, three-family, bought it that way when it really wasn't. And I wanted to do some work and kind of got the history of it from the building inspector at the time and was told you got to bring everything up to, to code. And I think the resolution of it was, all right, let's get this in front of the zoning board of appeals, make a decision, and work to get this building fixed up and cleaned up. Because if you, when you read the site plan approval by the selectmen and the special permit from the planning board, they both go into, you have to finish painting this side of the house. You have to find, paint the foundation. They specified, you know, he indicated would be red. They go into some real details. So just my interpretation again, my father was involved in it, so I didn't have any files from him. But reading the town's files is, they're trying to get this building really brought up to code for a number of different reasons. And with the approval, it became a four-unit and brought everything up to code. And as I understand it now, everything's still up to code and kept in good condition.
Okay.
But I think there was a little give and take there to get that structure in better shape.
Frank, is there enough room for sufficient parking? I think with five units, you would need what, ten spaces or eleven spaces?
Yes, there's more than enough room to put what's required. Trying to see where, the parking requirements, we would have over, it's two point two five per unit. With the proposed, we have two point four per unit. And if necessary, we could add additional ones in there. But, and don't forget, one, one of the parking spots that, which is not even counted in here, is the garage.
Right.
Because Bill Buckley didn't realize that that was a garage, which I didn't either at first until they got the plan. So that's not counted. So again, we're probably over, probably like two point five per unit. So there's plenty of space and it's shown on that plan. And if this is approval, then he's going to have to go in front of the planning board anyway.
Yeah, I spoke with, with Gabby Jordan the other day, you know, relative to, you know, whether you would or would not have to go before the planning board if we approved it. And she also spoke with Paige about it and they both confirmed that to be the fact.
Yes, and I've been indicating that to go too.
Kim, Kurt, Lorraine, any questions?
Barney.
Yeah, go ahead.
So I'm just curious if there's been any response from abutters to this proposal?
I have not received any. I asked Diana earlier if she had received any. Obviously, we'll, you know, request public comment if there is anybody on who wants to comment.
Okay.
But, but nothing has been received in the office so far.
Thanks, Barney.
Actually, I wanted to raise that same question with, with Frank and Mr. Sherman. Have you had any comments or discussions with your neighbors?
I talked to, I talked to one of my neighbors on the side, haven't ran into the other one yet, but.
Okay.
They start with Mr. Labrie, which is on one side, and actually across the street, that was directly across the street, he's been renovated into, you know, a condo complex, I believe, two units.
Yeah, that's the forty-two forty-four Sherman.
Yeah.
Yeah. And I suspect that other board members have been down Sherman Street, which is a combination of multi-family and single-family. Kim, any questions?
Yes, I do have a couple of questions. So the pass-through or the walk-in pantry, the connector, is that where a window is currently? Is that where it's going to have, that's where it's going to be?
Yes.
Okay, there's, there are two staircases on the back. Will those be, will those remain in the same place?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Kurt, any questions?
No questions on this one, Barney, no.
No questions on this one, Barney, no.
Okay, Barry, anything?
No questions.
Okay, is there any member of the public who wishes to be heard? I see Andrew Ballantyne has raised his hand. Andrew, if you can unmute yourself.
Hi, Andrew Ballantyne, fifty-one Sherman Street. I just wanted to say that as long as there isn't any impact to on-street parking, then I'm very much in favor of this proposal.
Now, there shouldn't be any on-street parking issues, because they're required to have off-street, you know, parking. And as Frank indicated, they should have enough room for that. Have there been any problems in the past?
With other people on the street, not with this residence.
Okay. Anybody else have any other questions? Okay, why don't we have a motion to close the public portion?
I move we close the public portion.
Second.
Okay, Dave?
Yes, Dave Brown, yes.
Uh, Kim Mellon?
Yes.
And Barney Obrich, yes. Who wants to start? You want to start, Dave?
Yeah, you know, this is difficult to get excited about. At least for me, it's, you end up with such an odd shape building when this is done with the attachment and everything. And I was just wondering if, well, I would see how the others feel, but if, if some other plans might be presented to us. That's what I have.
Okay, uh, Kim?
So I, I'm struggling with this one a bit as well. I certainly understand the applicant's request and, you know, wanting to have family close to you. I certainly can appreciate all of that. You know, I just keep coming back to, is this substantially detrimental to the public good? We have to keep in mind if something like this, approval of this would nullify the intent of the bylaws. I'm, I'm thinking also about what Attorney Spillane said about the hardship in this is if this weren't allowed and this didn't go forward, they would contemplate, you know, tearing it down because they really do, would like to have the fifth there. And I, I guess I'm struggling with that a little bit as well. Yeah, I'm not sure. I'm a work in progress.
Okay. Now, this is sort of one of the ones that, you know, I don't have a problem with as far as what's being proposed, but I do have a problem with it complying with the, you know, the variance criteria. I, I guess I would be on the same, you know, page as Dave, you know, are there other plans that might be more appropriate and that would address some of our concerns? Let me go, let me go to Kurt, Frank, before you respond, and then, uh, Lorraine. Kurt, go ahead.
Uh, I, I, I share your opinion that it's, it's gonna be a very oddly shaped and looking structure. And I'm not sure how I feel about it. I, again, I, I understand the desire to have your family close by, and it makes a lot of sense for a lot of reasons. So I'm on board with the concept. I'm just not sure I'm on board with the way the house currently, the proposed addition currently looks and sits on the site.
And Lorraine?
I was just wondering if there was some, some way that the attachment, like, you know, trying to envision how this would be able to look like one continuous structure. Is there some way where they've lined up that one side to make some greater attachment that would make it look more as a single structure than as something hanging off? But does that help with any of the concerns of, you know, of approving this that you have, Barney?
I mean, it certainly doesn't answer the variance issue, but I, I don't know whether it would answer some of the, you know, concerns that the others have as far as aesthetics and, and how it would look on the lot. You, you, Lorraine, what you're essentially saying is to, is if the pantry were not there, if the house was connected, you know, flat.
Or even if the pantry was squared off to, like, that area was to run in a line and align with existing structure. Just would appear more uniform, but again, I think that's less of an issue than.
Yeah.
You know, Barney?
Yeah, go ahead.
You know, I, I, I think I agree with what Lorraine is saying. I, I think if you could take that pantry and make it all, all the way across, now, that gives you, you know, and we're not here to help you design, but it gives you a squared-off look from the outside. So that's more aesthetically there. You, you, you can, you're gonna pick up some area if you don't change anything further. So, but you're probably by picking up that area, seventeen feet, that runway? Well, boy, if that was all kind of squared off, you might be able to, you know, do a lot of different things. Just my thought.
But I think there are, there are two sets of stairs in the back. Is, when I drove behind there, so I'm not sure if those are required, you know, egresses.
Well, I think that, that doesn't one set come off a deck?
Yeah.
So I, I, I think, and, yeah, actually, both of them come off. One comes off a porch, the other one comes off a deck. So.
So you might lose, you, you, you know, again, we're not architects or designers, but you, you know, you might lose the decks, but.
Or just, just one, just lose one of those staircases.
Uh, Frank, do you, Mr. Sherman, want to respond?
Um, yes, we, we want to take a look at that, have an architect look at it. You have to have a number of egresses from the different units, I'm not sure enough with it. If the board was open to it, if we continue it until next meeting, the board feels that if we can see if we can square off the building so it looks like one continuous building, um, I think would give him some time to work with his architect. It does, because right now, he's telling me on that, the side porch by the driveway, it comes out and you turn and go down. So you wouldn't want to come out and go right down to the driveway right away. But I don't want to play architect, just like I don't like to play engineer. So I think we'd like to have the ability to have, yes, right there. So it comes out, you come onto the porch and you turn right, and then you turn right to go down the stairs. I'd want, so I'm gonna take a look at it to see what could be done if we connect it all the way over the addition to, to over there, so that we have the right amount of egress. You know, and maybe part of the addition that goes in there goes to that back unit. You know, I'm just guessing right now.
Yeah.
But the, but the board feels that that would be, they'd be more open to approving it. If he did that, I, I think, let his architect have some time to look at that would be for everyone's benefit.
You know, and the other thing too, um, you know, maybe if, if they talk about exits, second exits, which is probably what the code says, there may be a way it could be handled via a fire escape, you know, rather than a set of stairs, maybe. I mean, it's gotta be looked at completely.
Exactly.
And I would be willing to, you know, move this for another meeting, Barney, let them think about it. They heard our feedback.
Yeah, I, you know, I, I, I mean, I raised the issue, you know, a couple of minutes ago about whether the, you know, variance criteria was satisfied. But let me just say this, I, I don't think so. I, I know that Frank thinks so, but I don't necessarily agree. But if, if everybody is satisfied with how the house will ultimately look, and nobody else is really concerned about variance criteria, I can get over that. So, you know, I think maybe the best thing is to, is to continue it and give, you know, Mr. Sherman and his architect an opportunity to, to review things and come back with us.
Yeah. You're right, though. It's something to think about getting over the hurdle, because you do add another unit, which basically is, you know, I've always told people it's not our responsibility to figure out how somebody can, you know, make more money. Add a department unit certainly gives that value at some point, even if it's not. I mean, it's a relative now, so I'm sure rent would be not much if anything, but.
Frank, go ahead.
Again, there, there's enough area on this lot for a five-unit. So, under the, I'm sorry?
No, I agree. And I knocked down, certainly could do five units, maybe even more, I don't know.
Right, and if it had been determined that it was a pre-existing, three-family, it would have been pre-existing, non-conforming, so we wouldn't be talking about a variance now, just a finding in order to do twenty feet there, and of course, the change, the modification. But my, my gut feeling from reading, again, all those files is, you know, there was litigation talked about back and forth, but they tried to come to, to a compromise. At this time, he wants to use the land for the purpose that is available under the zoning, which is the five unit. But for, you know, the eighty-nine decision, you could use that. Again, it was something that a prior, his father agreed to, so we are bound by it with regard to the modification as well as variance. But again, it's, it's a minor request going from twenty, going to twenty-five down to twenty. And in this area, you know, different houses built way back when weren't built in a particular area, it was built, they were more built for where was the easiest place for them to build it back then. You know, and there was no side yards and no consideration for, for the future here. So I, I, as Barney has indicated, you know, I believe we've, we've met it. But again, we're more than willing to look into making the adjustments to the design as being requested tonight. But again, if, if, if the board never thinks we're ever gonna get over that variance hump, you know, we don't want to waste anybody's time and effort with regard to that. And then what we'll do is we'll take a consideration in there and come back with one that's twenty-five feet off of the side yard, see if that's available. But again, if we come more, twenty-five feet off of that side yard, it's gonna get into the driveway, because they have looked to shrink it as narrow as per, as, as possible. So they can get what they want with regard to the one-floor living space. But we're, we're more than willing to have the architect really look at it to see what the comments indicated tonight.
So, so let me ask the other members of the board, where do you feel, or how do you feel as far as the variance itself?
Well, as presented, it's, I'm having a real problem getting there.
I agree. I agree. And so could you just remind, just to repeat, so you had said to get the twenty-five feet, if that were going to be a direction that this could go in? So what you're saying is it would be pushed an additional five feet away from, the numbers are very small on here, I'm having trouble reading it. Oh, that's much nicer. So an additional five feet away from the Lads, Brendan and Lindsay Lad, is that correct?
Yes, and, and therefore the parking would also be pushed at least five feet. And maybe if they do push it out, they're gonna want to widen it. I'm sure they'll work with the architect and the engineer to see their best design. But one of the reasons they did this also was to, to try to keep the parking away from the other single-family residents also. So if it's pushed out five more feet, again, the, the parking will go another five feet towards the Lavery's.
Can the parking be put in the back, or, or is that a problem with the drain easement?
Um, it possibly could be put in the back. I'd have to talk with the engineers about what's back there, and I don't know the topography back there and all that. I think they were trying to use what is there now without adding any more impervious surface than, you know, what's required. So again, that's an engineering question.
Yeah.
Looking at it, possibly you can go back there, and I'm sure they'll look at that.
So, so what you're saying is that in, in back of where the proposed unit is, it's either dirt or grass now, it's not, it's not concrete or asphalt?
No.
No. Okay.
No, you can kind of see the light line of what's there now. You know, you can, you see the two sheds, you can see the, the, the line, that is just where the pavement is currently. And, and that's why the impervious surface doesn't jump up as significantly as you would think, because of the addition. Most of the addition is going on impervious surface as it is.
So where are we? Go ahead, Lorraine?
So if in order to meet that setback requirement, they were gonna have to move all of the parking? That wouldn't be considered a hardship? Just from a cost standpoint?
I'm, I'm not sure I follow you.
So you're saying if they were to move, move the building in order to, I think you're saying that there isn't a hardship, right? You're not observing the hardship, it sounds like that's what everybody's saying. But the fact that they would have, in order to meet that twenty-five-foot requirement would cause them to have to move all of the parking, that.
Well, if, if they met the twenty-five-foot side yard setback requirement, they wouldn't need a variance.
Okay, well, that's but in order to, they have to move all the parking?
They would have to move it somewhat, I would think.
Yeah.
In, in order, you have to have, what, a twenty-four-foot driveway, Barry?
Yes.
So if you move the house five feet closer towards the Lavery property, you, you wouldn't have, as they're showing right now, you wouldn't have a twenty-five, twenty-four-foot driveway between the parking area and the house. So you would have to move that parking area.
It would all dull them.
You know, at least five feet closer to the Lavery's.
And so I'm just asking the question, is the fact that that creates a whole additional cost not considered a hardship?
No, again, because they, they wouldn't be needing a variance at that point. The, the hardship is one of the criteria of, of a variance. So something relative to topography, shape, conditions, soil conditions is, is one criteria. Hardship is a second criteria, and then no, no detriment to the bylaw is the third criteria.
Okay.
So, so again, if he were to move the house five feet closer to the Lavery property, he's no longer violating the setback. on the portion of the property that, that's next to the, to the Lads. So he definitely does not need a variance. He complies with the setback, the 25 foot setback requirement.
Yeah. I guess I'm, I'm just thinking of the avoidance of the cost of doing that. Does that play in?
Well, no, no. So again, um, I would think that if, if Frank, I'm sorry, if, um, the Mr. Sherman were to move the house again, five feet closer to the, the lavery's, again, we don't need a variance. Um, I suspect the only reason they would be here would be to, to modify that first condition or to eliminate that first condition.
Possibly, and I, I can't remember if we would need a finding also. I would want to double check that. But, um, I mean, this board in the past has, has found hardship when, uh, someone can't use their property for an allowed use under the zoning. And this property hasn't allowed use up to five units because of the area. It's just because of the location of the existing house, which was built at the, at the latest in the forties, if not earlier, because they have horse hair in there. Uh, which indicates that it was probably built even before that. You know, if, if it had been, um, off of 25 feet, you know, we wouldn't be having to do that because we'd be lining up correctly. It's just because that it's so close to it. And again, if it was a pre-existing non-conforming structure, we wouldn't be here for a variance either. So it's a unique circumstances, uh, you know, back in the day when, uh, an agreement was reached, they said, it's, it's a two family, but we'll give you the variances to go from two to four. We're asking for the same variances to go from four to five. Back in 89, uh, this board determined that, uh, the variances were, were, um, uh, recognized and, and now you're, you're not recognizing it, uh, the same way. I know Dave had some issues back in the day. He, again, their family, uh, they've come in and looked at me, talked with me a number of times. I've talked with, um, uh, Bill Buckley, the engineer, to get things aligned correctly. Again, they came in here trying to see if they get the variance. Again, if you don't think the variance is applicable, you know, um, you can give us that indication, we'll probably just ask that, do you view withdrawn or we just continue it to be able to come back showing you another plan that's 25 feet off so that we don't need the variance and just the modification and possibly a finding at that time. Um, it's whatever the board prefers at this time, what direction we would, we'd like us to go. Um, but they would like to try to, um, be able to put, um, an additional unit on here for his in-laws, whatever this board feels comfortable. Cause again, if you, you don't like the way it's connected up now, if you push it out five more feet, it's going to be off centered from that, uh, the, um, initial house. They wanted to keep it on center there. Um, or at least that's what I advised them to, uh, at one point. If you want them to connect it up more, I, I think we'd like to have an opportunity to go and, um, um, speak with their architect and see if we can do that for you. Uh, but again, if the board doesn't think they could ever get over the variance request, which again, I think the hardship with regard to a, um, dimensional variance, that can be minimal. And, and of course I've said that and this board has said, said that in the past. And I think the hardship is here and a lot of it has to do with the, uh, old building and the old decision and the way it's, it's there. But whatever the board, um, thinks is best, you know, we'd like to have an opportunity to go speak with his architect, see if we can come up with something that this board would be comfortable with.
Yeah, I guess the, the, the one thing I'll say as far as the, you know, the hardship is, you know, again, he, he, he is using the house right now or the property right now as a, as a multi-family house. So we're really just talking about a, a unit. Um, not, not, not the fact that he's prohibited from using it for multi-family purposes. But again, what, what's everybody's appetite? Dave, Dave hasn't had dinner yet, so his appetite is.
I, I would, um, I'd like to see the, the, uh, plan rethought. I think I can get there, you know, um, with the feedback that we've given tonight. We'll see what they can do with it.
Uh, do you want to just connect it or do you want to move five feet? Or would you like to see both?
Both. Both, Frank.
Okay.
Yeah, I, I have one question about, I'm trying to remember the, the existing parking. Is that paved or is it gravel or is it a mixture?
Paved.
It is paved, okay. Just couldn't remember.
I, I think back in 1989, Dave, there were some issues when I read the minutes relative to people parking in the front and on the front lawn.
Yeah. Well, you know, back in 89 or 88, you had selectmen show up, which is kind of unusual. So I don't remember exactly, but there certainly was more going on. Uh, or they wouldn't have been bothered with it.
You're absolutely right there. If you read the file, you can read between the lines that something else was going on. And I think it was, it was not kept up by the prior owner. And when his father bought it, you know, he thought it was a three, wanted to turn it into a four. And they got on him to say, and bring it up. And so I, I think you're absolutely right.
So.
So why don't we, um, why don't we continue with then?
Yeah, I move, you need a motion, Bonnie?
Yeah.
I would move that we continue this hearing uh, to allow the applicant to, you know, gather more information, uh, based on our feedback to our next meeting, uh.
March 18th.
Or do we meet after?
I'm sorry?
Well, you know, we can do, we, because obviously we're not in the same room, so we can't sign a piece of paper together. Um, why, why don't I continue with, until, why don't we continue until our April meeting? But obviously if you're, if you can come back in March, we'll, we'll do it then.
Yeah, but you have to continue it to a date certain. If you do it to April, I can't come back in March. So why don't we do it to March?
March, okay.
And, and if we're not ready, um, we'll tell you.
We'll just move it out further.
Okay.
And, and Diana, why don't you put us last in case there's other people? So if we do have to push it forward, you guys don't have to, uh, wait 10 minutes for the next hearing or something.
Uh, Kim, you want a second there? Okay, Dave, Dave Brown?
Yes.
Uh, Kim Mellon? And Barney over it, yes. Diana, why don't you, um, when you get a chance, tomorrow morning, I guess, when you're back in the office, email me the, um, continuation form.
Okay.
Okay, I'll sign it. I'll scan it. I'll send it to Frank. Frank, if you didn't, get it back to Diana.
Absolutely. And why don't you just leave, uh, continuation date open-ended? How do you usually do it? Do you just put it forward to one month or?
The last time, you know, last time we did it, we, we continued it to, um, I think like, like three months. Why don't I continue it to the end of March?
Well, why don't we do it to the end of April, just in case we do.
End of April, okay.
You know, never knowing what the architect's going to be able to do, because he has to come up with a couple of different plans now. So, um, I'd like to get in if, if we can have it on time and get it to you and then, uh, well in advance to, to look at it. Um, you know, I won't get you anything, you know, two days before. I'll try to get it to you at least a week.
Okay. So why don't we continue it to April 30th then?
Yeah, just in case. So that if I just send you a letter saying please continue it to April, we're good to go with that, with that.
Okay.
Are you talking about continuing the hearing to the end of April or writing a continuance form to the end of April?
Uh, the form and the end until March.
Okay.
Cause if we can get it together, we'd like to get it in with March and, um, but if we can't, we'll just continue it to April. And again, we won't send you guys this stuff the day before, two days. You know, we'll try to get it to you a week in advance so you have time to look at it.
Okay, great.
Great. Do you want a new motion, Bonnie, or do you want to just?
Yeah, why don't you make a new motion?
So I move that we, um, continue this hearing to our next meeting and that we have Frank, Frank has agreed to sign a waiver form to the end of April?
Uh, for the decision to be, um.
Oh, for the, for the decision to be made.
Second.
Uh, Dave Brown?
Yes.
Kim Mellon?
Yes.
And Barney over it, yes. Anything else on this?
Well, thank you very much for your time and we hope to see you next month, April.
Right, thank you.
So now we got some general business, right, Bonnie?
Yep, yep, uh, minutes?
I have, um, Barney sent me some, um, spelling corrections.
You don't have spell check?
It, they're real words. They're just not the right ones.
Well, there were, there was a little bit more than, um, than, than just some spell check words. Um, you know, I, I had thought about this one change and, and I actually had forgotten to, to make it. And then Barry gave me a call and, and I said, you know, thank you for calling because you reminded me that I neglected to make one change at the very end of the discussion relative to, um, the 15 Baker Street, um, application. Um, there was wording in there that, uh, connecting the two structures was allowed by right. And we eliminated the bright by right words.
All right, yeah.
Now, in relation to that, um, I would not be surprised if in March, um, Frank brings an application to, um, connect those two for a special permit to allow the two structures to be connected.
Okay.
Talk, you know, he's talked to me, uh, he's talked to Barry. Um, Diana said that Stephanie Sylby stopped by the office today, or was it today, Diana, or yesterday?
She talked to her on the phone.
On the phone, okay. So I, I would not be surprised if we, um, if we have an application from Frank to, for a special permit to connect the two units. And that would obviously allow for a two-family home. We got anything else?
Well, we have to approve these minutes now.
Yeah, but we haven't, uh, yeah, anything else on the minutes?
Oh, okay.
I would move that we approve the minutes, uh, with the corrections that, uh, Bonnie made. Are you, we, we saw the corrections, didn't we? We just got to approve the minutes.
You just say as amended.
As amended.
Okay, uh, Kim second? Okay, Dave?
Yes.
Kim? Kurt? And Lorraine?
Yes.
Okay. Um, anything else in, in Diana? We get any other applications or any other people sniffing around?
No. Nope, I don't think I've heard from anybody. Well, I, uh, everything goes through Barry now, so you can ask him.
Anybody, Barry, talk with you or?
Nope.
Okay. So maybe we'll have one or two things next month and that might be it for a while. We'll see.
Okay. I move, will you adjourn the meeting?
Second.
Okay, again, roll call, Dave?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Kurt?
Yes.
Lorraine?
Yes.
Okay, I mean, yes. So everybody take care. Hopefully we'll see you all soon again.
Enjoy your dinner, Dave.
Mike, Mike Webber, thanks very much again.